The Legos to our print. Some of the directives that. And it's interesting because all of our professional.
Got a small turnout tonight. Yeah, no, I know. We're good. Oh, okay. All right. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm going to call the February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Auburn School Committee to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll start down here on my right with introductions.
Dan Poishon, Ward five.
Quinn Gormley, Ward four.
Corinne McWigan, Ward one.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Pam Albert at large.
Sue Doris, Superintendent.
Pat Caudier, Ward three.
Adam Platt, City Council Representative.
Connor Dufour, Student Representative.
Amanda Kuchar, Business Manager.
Scott Aneer, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone. Jay could not be here tonight, and neither could Calvin, I believe. So moving into our consent agenda, I will start with a motion, entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the approval of tonight's agenda, the approval of the minutes of the February fifth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, as well as the approval of the second probationary contract renewal for Amy Heimerle and the continuing contract renewals for Megan Wood and Mary Beth Galway. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Corinne and second Pam, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, Quinn. All those in favor? All right, motion carries. It does not look like we have anyone here tonight for public participation, so we are going to move right into our presentation tonight. Oh, wait, no, we don't have a presentation. Sorry, that's coming later. And we do not have a School Committee Student Representatives report tonight. That will be next week, I believe. So we will move right into our Superintendent's report. Dr. Doris.
Thank you very much. We have two items tonight that we'll be reviewing, and the first is a cybersecurity update, and Mr. Peter Robinson will be providing that for us.
Good evening. So I'm, Dr. Doris asked me to give you an update on particularly the Power School breach, which happened in December, and then just a general cybersecurity update. It has been a rather busy six weeks in that domain, somewhat stressful, I will say. So this all started on January eighth, and I got a text from Mr. Aneer. I was actually homesick with COVID at the time, saying, there's been a Power School breach. Did you know? And I said, no, I'm here on the couch. And so I checked my email and found that Power School had sent a notice the day before saying that there had been a breach and that we were one of the affected customers. My first reaction is, well, we're locally hosted. How can that be? So I did some research, signed up for the webinar that they were offering that day with the CEO of Power School, which tells you the level of importance that they were attaching to it, and their Chief Information Security Officer. And here's what we found out. Sometime in December, one of their support contract engineers had their account compromised. We don't know how. We can assume perhaps phishing, something like that. And that allowed the malicious actor to get into Power School's support systems, which allowed them to gain access to all of the customers, all of the Power School customers' Power School servers, whether or not they were hosted with Power School or hosted locally in districts. They took their time, they wrote a script which enabled them to go in on December twenty-second and cycle through hundreds, if not thousands, of Power School instances across the world, not just the US, and take away the student and teacher tables. So this is basically demographic information. We're talking about names, addresses, phone numbers, parent information. Fortunately, that was all that they took. They did not gain access to all of the other things which are in Power School, so there was no access to things like grades, class rank, IEP information, nurse visit, medication information, none of that. It was just the basic demographic tables, and fortunately, we have been security conscious here in Auburn, and we have never stored things like social security numbers or any other kind of financial information in those tables. We are fortunate. There are other districts that were not as fortunate as far as that went. So it's very basic information that was taken. In fact, when you look at the main statute in terms of what's required for notification, what was taken from our server doesn't actually meet the definition of personal information requiring notification. So there's that. They also then told us that they had been working with Cyber Steward, which is a company that acts as sort of a middleman in situations where large corporations do get hacked. They're sort of the middleman between the corporation and the hacker, and that they had come to an agreement with the malicious actor that the data would be deleted, hadn't been posted anywhere, and all copies would be deleted, and received, I will say this in quotes, assurances and proof in terms of video of seeing it get deleted, that this had been done. The Chief Information Officer said that he believes that this was valid, because this is an actual organization that does this as their business, and so their business model requires them to do what they say they're going to do in cases like this. And if they were caught not doing it, they would not have any validity moving forward. So he believes that that was what actually happened. Of course, there is no complete assurance ever in a case like that. So that's where we stand with that. Power School has taken several steps since then to ensure that this doesn't happen again. They're now requiring all their employees to log in through a VPN. They're requiring two-factor authentication. The support access that they had into customers' Power School instances is now default turned off instead of default turned on, and in a release that should be coming out soon, they're even going to set that so that you cannot leave it permanently on. If support needs access, you turn it on for, you know, twenty-four hours or two days, and then it automatically shuts back off again. Power School has also taken on the responsibility of making sure that if there are notifications required to any individuals or to any kind of regulatory body, they will do that for us. We provided them with the information they need to be able to do that, and I actually got confirmation yesterday that that process is happening. We immediately, once we had this happen, Dr. Doris and I had a conversation, decided that we needed to go ahead and notify our community straight away, rather than waiting for Power School to get around to that, given that they were dealing with potentially thousands of organizations trying to do the same thing. So we robocalled and we emailed everybody in currently in Power School. The challenge is that this goes back to when we purchased Power School in two thousand and three. So it's not just the current community. That's very difficult because some of those people, students who are now in their thirties, the information we have in Power School is not going to get a hold of them. Fortunately, it really is very basic information. So in today's world of information compromise, it really is not, it's phone directory kind of information. So it's not a major concern as far as that goes. And that, so that's really where we are with Power School right now. Does anyone have any questions about that?
First of all, I want to say that I appreciate you and Dr. Doris's willingness to tell the community and not wait for Power Chart. I think it's important that the community knows and understands and that goes with transparency and everything, so I appreciate that. But I do have a question. You said that the culprit was an organization. What, did they find out why they decided to, for Power Chart, I mean, Power Chart, Power School?
This is, I mean, this is, this is not an uncommon thing in the cybersecurity world. There are, and these are all organizations located in other countries. They actually operate like regular businesses. They have, you know, offices, HR departments, the whole thing. And they essentially go and they find other, you know, businesses that they can target. And clearly, in this case, the, the sort of the MO was to get this massive amount of data, and we're talking probably terabytes worth of data from all of these Power School customers across the world, and then call Power School and say, yeah, by the way, we've got all this information. What are you going to do about it? We can infer that some not insignificant amount of money changed hands. We don't know that. That was never actually said by Power School, but reading between the lines of the way that interaction was described, I think it's pretty clear.
Adam.
Thanks. I appreciate the notes you made on how the, is it Power School, what changes they're making to kind of move forward and make sure this doesn't happen again. Are there any changes that we make within our district, or was this purely just a software, not software, but a program issue where it takes place on their stuff and, you know?
So I constantly, and my team constantly are thinking about what, what can we do to make us more hardened against this kind of thing, to make our attack surface smaller so that it's harder for people to get in. In this particular case, the first thing I did was to turn off that support remote access, and that will only get turned on if I'm in an active support case with Power School from now on. But that was, the standard practice with Power School was for that to be on, so that if they needed to get in, they could. This is one of those cases where, you know, you, you know, Mr. Aneer once said, and as we were talking about this topic at an admin team meeting, that I've always said it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And I think sometimes that you do all the things right, and still, you still have bad things happen. So the other item, and I think some of you probably saw some of this in, if you, if you look at your school department email, we are surrounded by constant phishing attacks, constant. We had one a couple of weeks ago where somebody unfortunately fell for it and even gave their multi-factor code, so their account was compromised, and an email was sent to, I think, every single person who has a school department email. And that one, I think, was pretending to be a teacher who had musical instruments that they wanted to give away. I'm sure had anyone responded, it would have been, oh, give me your credit card number so that I can ship these to you. There's a retirement scam that keeps coming back. The teachers keep sending me saying, is this real? No, it's not. Dr. Doris had a, somebody who was trying to donate an airstream trailer, that an email was sent under her name the other day to everybody. What we do in those cases is if, if it was a compromise of one of our accounts, and that was sent out to everybody in the district, particularly if it was sent to student accounts, I go in and I'm able to remove those emails from people's mailboxes. So for most people, if I find out about it quickly, which typically I do, because somebody messages me, they don't even see that message. It's gone before they even can read it. A lot of these, though, they're sort of random, coming in from outside, and by the time I find out about it, it's too late. People have read it. We try to do as much training as possible. We actually are having some training that will be available, made available to us through a state grant. It's a company called Know Before. What they do is they allow us to send out phishing emails, which are in fact training. And so people get these emails, and if they click on the link, then it gives them a little video saying, here were the things that you, you might have wanted to notice about this email before you clicked on the link. So that hopefully, I mean, it's going through, it's through state procurement, so it's taking its time, but we will get there, and we will have that hopefully before the end of this year. If not, I think we'll be able to start next year with it. So it's, it's just a constant thing. It's all around us, and there's not a lot we can do to sort of fence ourselves off from it, other than sort of unplugging the internet, as one of my staff suggested. I said, that's probably a little extreme. Might, might have some negative consequences. Well, there are, there are days when, when I am tempted, but we try to, you know, resist those temptations.
So in the past, I'm sorry, go ahead. In the past, I, now we're waiting on this grant to do the training. Has there been training on how to identify these emails? Because I know at my work, we have, we're constantly being.
Yes, we've, we've done, we did a training, actually, it was my, my first thing in the auditorium at the high school. We did a training last year around, around phishing there. We've done through our technology reps at the elementary school. Google has a very nice little training that they have, they've made available, so they went and did that in their buildings. We've done as much as possible, and I actually think that our staff is pretty savvy. I mean, I, you know, sometimes the number of emails that I get from people saying, hey, I got this email. I think it was phishing. Yep, well done. You know, it's, I get a lot of those, and it's sort of a daily thing. So I think we do pretty well. The problem is we have to win every single time. You know, it only takes one person to be in a, in a quick moment when they're checking their email, and they say, oh, yes, secure document from a guidance department in another district. I'm going to click that link. Fortunately, we, everybody, all of our staff now have multi-factor authentication turned on, so that's an additional layer. So even if somebody does click on that secure document link and put in their username and password, they would then have to give the code as well, and they should be getting a notification from Google at that point saying, someone's trying to access your account. And that, in most cases, is enough to sort of make people think, oh, yeah, that probably isn't good. And then they go and change their password. So we're, we're saved, saved on that kind of situation.
Do we provide students with emails? And if so, at what points do they get those?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Do we provide students with email accounts?
We do, we do.
And when do they begin using those?
So the, the email accounts exist for every student. As soon as they're in Power School, that, that creates a Gmail account, a Google for Education account, because we use that, we use Google for a lot of other things besides just email. I would say that students are not really using those emails as email until maybe upper elementary grades. It depends on the teacher. Some teachers use them earlier, but it's, I mean, you're certainly not seeing kindergarten through probably third-grade students using email.
Are the trainings that are done with staff around phishing, are those also done with students?
That's something that we certainly encourage in terms of the sort of the whole digital citizenship piece. It's not something that, I mean, my team, in terms of who would do training, there's two of us, so we're, we're not able to get to every student, but we certainly hope that that filters out to the classroom level.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item under my report this evening is a winter sports update, and we have our athletic director, Todd Sampson, here to give us a picture of what's happening.
Thank you. This will be a lot lighter than cybersecurity and phishing expeditions. I'll try to make it brief, but we've had a fantastic winter, so try to highlight a lot of the team and individual successes that we've had. Alpine Skiing, that just ended their season yesterday. Because the demand for the mountains is so high during February vacation, they've had to move those state meets after vacation. So a lot of our kiddos, Calvin, who's not here tonight, he's probably trying to get caught up on all the classwork he's missed the last couple of days. But our girls had a KVAC Giant Slalom champion, freshman Ellie Porter, and that qualified her to go to the Eastern High School Championships March sixth through ninth in New Hampshire. Yesterday, Maddie Ranger finished in second place in the championship in the slalom at Tickham. Our boys, one of the things I did with the coaches preseason at our meeting, I've moved up to the main office, and I've got a great big window as every kid walks in, and I said, boy, it would be great to have some KVAC and some MPA plaques in this window when people walked in. So that window is full right now, if you come by. And one of the plaques in there is, the boys won the KVAC Alpine Championship a couple of weeks ago, and had a rough day on Monday at the state championships, but came back and had a very solid day yesterday, and finished third overall. So very, very proud of those folks. Basketball, had a tremendous season after not having a facility for a few weeks. Thank you to Central Maine Community College and St. Dom's for allowing us to, to use their facilities. But our girls finished in the third seed, won their quarterfinal game against Portland, and made it down to the Cross Insurance Arena. Rachel Penny set the Edward Little all-time three-pointer made record, beating recent grad Marshall Adams. So she's now the record holder for that. Rachel, in a couple of weeks, will play in the McDonald's All-Star Game in Bangor. Our boys finished in the fourth seed and got to play Lewiston back-to-back, last game of the season, and then in the playoffs. And they actually made it all the way to the regional final last Saturday. Unfortunately, a couple bounces of the ball didn't go our way and couldn't get up by Wyndham. But one of the things that did happen down there is Ding Maywin was named the George Vinyl Award winner. That award goes to the most outstanding player in the tournament. And while I was down there, I asked a couple of folks, doesn't that award usually go to a member of the team that wins? And they believe in the last twenty-five or thirty years, it's only happened twice. So that just will show you how dominant Ding was during that tournament. He certainly was, was exciting to watch. And he also will represent Edward Little at the McDonald's All-Star. Our cheer program has grown leaps and bounds, had a great regional competition, and actually qualified for states for the first time in ten years. So that was exciting. We have two athletes in indoor track that are still competing. They've qualified for New England's. Gavin Anderson will compete in the eight hundred and Keesley Marquis in the four hundred. Saturday, they'll go to the Reggie Lewis Center down in Roxbury and compete there. So that's very exciting. Ice hockey, the Red Hornets had a great season. They finished in the third seed with a record of twelve, four, and two. We won't talk about that playoff game, unfortunately, got upset that night. Boys finished the season really strong with a convincing win over Biddeford. They had a very impressive overtime win against Falmouth, which was one of the best teams in the state during the season. Nordic Ski, we don't have, yes, we don't have a large Nordic Ski team, but they were awarded the MPA Class A Sportsmanship Award. So the two young ladies are Nora Condon and Katie Morgan. So we're super proud that they were represented for not only being great athletes in the sport, but also being, displaying tremendous sportsmanship. And Nora also finished third in the five K, five K classical and the, and seventh in the freestyle. When I was making some notes about swimming, I got onto like the third page of school record set and personal best. So I kind of just surmised it as our girls team won the KVAC Championship, another plaque in the window. Our boys won it for the fourth consecutive year, another plaque in the window. The boys were also Class A runner-up, another plaque in the window, so pretty proud of that. And one of our hidden gems in our staff for winter sports is Scott Morrison. He, he has coached for a very, very long time. He is a very active official, but he was awarded not only the boys' Coach of the Year, but also the girls' Coach of the Year. So he got double awarded at that conference championship. Our Unified Basketball Team, one of my favorite activities, they're undefeated, four and O. And we would welcome everybody to join us on March eleventh, Tuesday, March eleventh. We'll have our last home game of the year, and we would like to have a great crowd there as we recognize those seniors. If you haven't been to a Unified Basketball game, it's, it's a lot of fun. I was just speaking to, we're actually right now hosting the Winter Games opening ceremonies at the high school, and just speaking with Ian Frank, and the Unified Basketball has really been the model for some of these other activities, which we're going to try to start to explore with, with some of our student athletes. And our wrestling program, finished the season twenty-one and four. Three wrestlers are qualified to compete in the New England Championships in Rhode Island on March eighth and ninth. Cooper Blair, Isaac Martin Poole, and Evan Madigan. Cooper finished third at the states. Evan Madigan was state runner-up at one hundred and thirty-eight pounds. Evan, one of the things, in basketball, it's a highlight to score a thousand points. Wrestling, if you get a hundred wins. Most times, that takes kiddos, they're junior, a lot of seniors. Evan Madigan's a sophomore, and he got his hundredth win this season. So that just tells you what a special wrestler he is. And also, Kayden Dulak finished fourth in the state meet. So all kinds of, of great things. Kudos to Bill Buzza and the Pep Band. Not only do they come to a bunch of our regular season games, they made the trek down to the Cross Insurance Arena for our playoff games, and it just creates a whole different environment when you have those kiddos down there supporting each other. And always, our grandstand club continues to support our student athletes. Every one of these, you heard me talk about the plaques, every one of these programs get five hundred dollars to put in their account for KVAC championship gear, and it wouldn't be without the hard work of those, those folks. So thank you for letting me gloat and brag. It's been a great winter.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not so much questions, but definitely want to put a, give a shout out to Scott Morris, because he
Morris, because he is, we call him the Pied Piper of swimming, and he has been a phenomenal addition, well, for years. He does so much for the kids, and it's such a pleasure to watch how he is there for them and for all of them in surrounding communities, because he does a co-op team with Lisbon, Poland, Lewiston. If you don't have a swim team, he's like, "Come here, we'll take you." And it's been fantastic, because he really brings kids that hardly ever swim to those that are, you know, going to D1 teams after school. And second, with the swim team, the girls KVAC win is the first time E.L.'s done it in how many years? A lot.
I'd have to go into the record books.
Yeah, I know. My daughter came home and was like, "It's the first time in like 20 years," or something like that. So, she was pretty stoked.
Yeah, they're pretty excited.
Any else? I'm sorry for not knowing this, the closest I came to sports was the math team. What is Unified Basketball?
So, Unified Basketball, I'm glad you asked. Unified Basketball is a program, a partnership with Maine Special Olympics, and we partner with them, and Unified Basketball Team has partners from our school, and then we also have the athletes. And the athletes have an IEP, sometimes with minor needs, sometimes with major. And I was at the middle school Unified Game yesterday, and one of the adaptations for the young lady in the wheelchair from Scarborough was, we just put a trash can on the end line. But when she was able to get the ball in the trash can, the gym just exploded with excitement. It was, it was really fun to watch. And our math team is doing very well.
We actually have a really good math team.
Elena Berry is...
In terms of public high schools, we are right in the knocking on the door of taking down the privates.
What time is the Unified Basketball game?
3:30.
And you said that's on March 11th?
March 11th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I do not have a chairperson's report tonight, other than, I will not be here next week, so my lovely co-chair will take over next week, when we start our budget meetings, starting next week. So, the fun month of March and budget meetings every Wednesday. So, come prepared for that. Adam, do we have a city council update tonight?
Fairly light one. It was a pretty light city council meeting last week. The only thing I wanted to touch upon, if anybody had a chance to check it out, there was the ad hoc report on homelessness that was presented at the meeting. It was a really good report. It was not too long, it was concise, and really hit kind of the meat and potatoes of the points that needed to be addressed. There was a section on students, and so I just want to share some of that information and encourage you guys all to check the report out if you didn't already. But there was just a quick data set on the number of, I guess, underhoused is the term we're using, underhoused students. And the increase has been about four times, 400% over five school years. And so, I just wanted to share that from 2019 to 2020, there were 58 students. 19 of those are unaccompanied, so 33% of the total. You have unaccompanied, underhoused students. Two years later, 2021 to 2022, that's nearly doubled to 113 students with 29 unaccompanied, so that's 26% of the total of 113 are unaccompanied students, underhoused. And 2324, which is where we're pulling the most recent data from, is 234, so it's doubled again, with 46 unaccompanied, so 23% of the total, again, of 234 are unaccompanied students. So, I just wanted to share that data. I think we've heard that data already. It was, I think, one of the first times that data was really in the face of the city counselors. I received a couple of questions after, excuse me, that I'm going to follow up with Dr. Doris on, and that is, what are we doing? What can we do? What tools do we have to assist these students? So, I'll be shooting you an email to just get some more information on that. But that's it from city council. We'll be starting our budget process. I think there's going to be some tidbits on Monday, but our workshop is March 17th, I believe.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to our committee reports, so we have a finance subcommittee minutes linked. Either Adam or Amanda, do you want to just give a quick summary of those?
Also, a light meeting. Our finance meeting was fairly light. There were no measures voted on, so everything is just summary. The first was the audit update, which was actually also shared at the city council meeting, but that was just addressing, again, and we've heard this two or three times, but that was addressing those weaknesses in the audit from last year, and Amanda addressing how we're fixing those. I guess in no particular order, you know, some of them involve better reconciliation between the city and the school, and now we're up to date on that. So, this, just so we're all kind of on the same page, the school had promised the city that by February of 2025, we'd be caught up on our reconciliations, and we are. So, yay, school department, we are true to our word, so that's great. There are a couple other items in there. You can see them in the memo. Happy to go into detail if anybody has any questions on those. And then number two is just the financial report, and I don't think there was anything striking in that report. Happy to answer any detail on that. Yep, that's it.
Great. Thank you. And then, moving on to our curriculum subcommittee minutes. Corinne, do you have a quick update on those?
Yeah, at the curriculum meeting, in the minutes, it says proposed additions. I just wanted to make a clarification that it's kind of like a slide into empty spots. So, it's not additions necessarily. It's new courses, but it's taking place of others. So, there's no fiscal impact for those. But like world languages, there's Hispanic peoples and their cultures. We don't have a Latin program at the moment, so that will kind of enhance what the teachers have been wanting to do. A dual enrollment course and business entertainment and medical terminology. Those are the three that we added, but they are taking the place of others that are already in our budget. And then, we got an overview of the personal finance courses, offerings at the high school, and it was a very in-depth handout on there. But it is a graduation requirement, and it's not always easy for a lot of kids to access that, because they put so many things on their schedule. So, there are many different ways to offer that. And it was really nice, so they could reach all the students. I know that there's some independent studies in that, and then there's some expanded personal finance programs. So, that's what we went for, and you can give me a holler or Scott and you're...
Great, thank you. And then last, we have the Health and Safety Subcommittee Minutes. If I can open them. Pam, did you want to give an update on those?
Sure. There's quite a bit. We started off with looking at illnesses and absences. We've had a lot of flu, RSV, COVID, there's been a lot going on, so there's been a lot of absences in schools. We looked at our community outreach efforts as far as safety and community development teams. Corey Jamison, who is one of our counselors, talked about the social, emotional, and mental health, the mental health challenges faced by students, and the strain on the services that we have. We have a lot of wait lists right now in trying to help our students. We talked about multilearner, multilingual learner program, and right now, we have about 320 students who are currently in the program, and the testing and how we're getting more people in the community, and being able to have them access education. Mary Beth Galway talked about the ongoing projects in the guidance department and the professional development, including sessions with Sasha Anistofus. I probably said that wrong. I said it wrong.
Anna Stazov.
Anna Stazov. Sorry, Sasha. My maiden name was always massacred, too, so... But she is the head of the McKinney Vento, and she gave updates on homelessness. And we also talked about the Alice Training Update, and Ben Wilson is in charge of that, and how we're dealing with trainings for Alice, the Alice Program, which is the response team if there was ever a school shooting. Sasha also gave an update on the McKinney Vento program, which kind of backs on what you talked about, the homelessness, and it identified 184 students district-wide who are underhoused or unhoused, which is an increase from 162 this same time last year. The upward trend is largely attributed to improved identification methods. And we just talked about what we can do. Questions were asked about what can we do as a community as well to help these students and these families. There's, she was also talking about the store next door, which is offering a $12,000 in annual funding to support students in need with clothing, hygiene products, and graduation supplies. Of course, it would be wonderful if we could even have more help in the community, but one step at a time.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Pat?
It's not a question. I just wanted to respond about the store next door. I was really pleased that the school department followed up with that program. I think it's a really good program in Lewiston, and having it over here, I think, will really be helpful to our community. And a blurb of my 100 women who care, they're one of the agencies that we did give money to in the past year, so I think I'm really proud of you guys for following through.
And then the last thing is, we just have our facilities subcommittee agenda linked, and our first meeting of that is tomorrow night at 5:00 at the high school. Moving on to old business, we have, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB JJE, Student Fundraising Activities for Second Reading and Approval. Do I have a motion? So moved. Seconded. Pam and Quinn. Any questions or discussion on that before we vote? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUB JJE, Student Fundraising Activities for Second Reading and Approval. So moved. I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB GBJC, Retention of Application Materials for Second Reading and Approval. Do I have a motion? So moved. Quinn? Pat? And any questions or discussion on that one before we vote? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUB GBJC, Retention of Application Materials for Second Reading and Approval. Motion carries. We do not have any new business tonight. All of our upcoming meetings are shown on the schedule, starting with next week, our first school committee budget meeting on the 5th, and then again on the 12th, and again on the 19th. Do I have any future agenda items or requests for information? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 40560 for the purpose of labor contract negotiations. Do I have a motion? So moved. Corinne? Second. Quinn? All right. All those in favor of moving into executive session? We are now in executive session at 6:38. Thank you.